...the moratorium on for additional year on the acceptance of applications for use of installation and permanent internally illuminated signs within the Village of Roses Point. And I open up for discussion, public hearing, anybody wishing to address the board, they do so. No one wishes to address the board, I close the public hearing. Okay, do you want to act on it now, Board?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to extend the moratorium for an additional year on the acceptance applications for the use and installation and placement of the internally illuminated signs within the Village of Roses Point.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper's, any discussion?
There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote, but use your sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Open the meeting from comments in the public at this time. Anybody wishing to address the board, they do so.
Self, please.
Go ahead.
This is Boy Scout, this is part of his instruction, but does not minimize my message, he didn't know what he was talking about.
But you go ahead. I'll have.
Thanks for your patience. Good evening. I came to address the village board tonight to declare that last Wednesday I suffered a loss of property. That is an acute disappointment to me. Wednesday was my day off, and I observed the village crew giving a hard-eat pruning to a locust tree in front of my property. That was appropriate because the tree is village property. However, earlier, the crew destroyed a significant branch on my lone remaining 100-year maple tree, a tree which grows on my property. This action was a mistake. That branch stemmed from the north side of the tree and turned 90 degrees downward along the tree's trunk. The branch was contained in space above my property. I contend that the branch was cut for the only reason that it was within reach of the crew's long extension chainsaw. That branch was dear to me. That branch was my most favorite feature of my property. Over the years that I have lived there, my gaze was continually drawn to that branch every week of every month, all year long. I could wax poetic about that branch for many reasons. I want you to know that branch added character and color to life in this village for any citizen who took time to notice. You are welcome.
Any comments, Board?
Well, it didn't happen just to your place, it happened a few other places in the village. We shouldn't have done it. All we can do is apologize.
I didn't get your name, by the way, sir.
James Jiro, 59th State Street.
We had several complaints, Jim, several, several complaints. That afternoon, Superintendent stopped immediately. They're not supposed to cut any branches on trees that are on private property unless they check with the property. That's the way it always has been. If there is a problem with a branch that hinders pawing the sidewalk or stuff, they're supposed to go to the property owners and look, we have this problem, this is our solution, right? And the property owner should have the say. Unfortunately, very unfortunately, this thing was handled very improperly. I feel for you, I feel for the rest of people that it happened to, there's people that were very upset over a tree that the lady planted on her property 16 years ago, and they trimmed that, and more than it was a tears. I really felt bad, I can't put the branch back, I wish I could. Because there's certain individual will be over there putting it back, let me tell you. So all I can say is I apologize, village, it's certainly not our policy, and Superintendent has taken steps to stop it, that's all I can tell you. It's a sad situation when something like this happens. Anybody else got any other comments? Anybody else want to address the board? No, Jameson?
I'm the president of the union for, in the Village of Roses Point employees. We have a policy coming in, it was already in, put into the contract that was signed last year, or beginning of this year, for dental and vision, which does not really cover it very well through the insurance that we get through the village. This is given to us through the CSEA union. What it entails basically is vision and dental. As long as we have 50% of the union members that want this insurance, we can get, we can get it to come into here for ourselves. And the reason it was put into the contract was so that way the village is able to withdraw from our pay with the employee paying for it all. The prices are pretty reasonable on the vision, dentals, it's going to be a touch and go. I have a union meeting this Thursday to address everybody in the union. The reason I'm coming to the board is not only just to let you know, but it does affect or can affect the people in the office that are not union members. Because if we have over 50% of the union members getting into this, then the people in the office will also, even though they're not union, will be able to, if they want to take this policy, with the different riders that follow along with it, they will be able to. Whether it's the office, Arsen, Brian, so it's a really, really nice policy. As soon as I get the feedback from the meeting on this Thursday, I will inform the village board of which way we're going to go, and that way they, you know, if we have over the 50%, then we can let the people inside the office have an option to look at what it would cost them to have out of their pay for this insurance. And there also is a lady coming up that has, she came, I had talked to her at the beginning of the year, her name is Libby. They have an insurance through CSEA, which is also similar to Aflac. And because of the open window, you have to wait till December, I believe it is, or November. So she is also coming up this Thursday. So that also does not affect the village board or the taxpayers, it comes out of the CSEA members, out of their own pay, you know, through deductions for payroll. And so I just wanted to, you know, give you a brief update, you know, there's nothing that affects, you know, anything other than payroll when it comes down to it. But I will inform the board when it is all said and done.
Thank you, Jason. Before you got any questions? What are you looking for from the board here?
No, it's just to inform you, because it, because it affects non-union members.
But what I'm saying is, are you looking for something like payroll deductions?
No, that's already in the contract, George. It's already, it was already placed in there so we could get this set up. It was just, just to inform you what's going on, because it affects non-union members if this takes place.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? If not, I'll close this section of the meeting, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Okay, minutes of previous meetings, meeting of October 19th, and special meeting of October 27th. Jim, thank you for coming. You all have copies of the board, there are any additions or deletions.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting of October 19th and October 27th.
I'll second it.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote, but use your sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. All bills, you all have copies of the bills. Is there any addition or deletions?
No, there is not.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote, but use your sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
Okay, the first letter I have is addressed to the mayor. Please accept our sincere thanks for the village's generous donation of tables, chairs, stage, sound system, cleaning equipment, and continued support for our recent Fort Montgomery Day celebration. This was a significant event for the Village of Roses Point. The celebration was successful beyond anything we had anticipated. Their generous donation to the event was an important part in helping their estimated 2,000-plus people who attended enjoy this very special occasion. The generosity is appreciated, as is your continued support of our efforts to work on behalf of historic Fort Montgomery. Sincerely, the committee. The second item I have was from the Roses Point Champlain Historical Society. Dear mayor and trustees, we have $1,200 in a quad grant to purchase a historical marker this year. It should be related to the lake in some way, and we thought one about a sail ferry in Roses Point would be appropriate. Mary Raskin and I have searched for the appropriate wording. We've decided on in 1805, David Mayo ran a sail ferry that crossed Lake Champlain from the foot of Champlain Street, Roses Point, New York, to Windmill Point, Albert, Vermont. This marker will be placed on property owned by Natalie Hirsch and Victor Chang at 221 Lake Street. We have already obtained their permission. The words were taken from Pecquard Holmes' book, Roses Point, and that was from Jerry Fadbro. The next letter I have is to the Roses Point Village Board. Our community stage project is well underway, and the first phase should be complete within the next couple of weeks. We will receive $13,500 from the state quad commission, and local groups have either contributed or pledged another $6,850, for a total of $20,350. We originally budgeted $20,000 to cover the cost of supplies and labor. We have also reached out to businesses and individuals. This year, the village budgeted $850 for the Aberondack Regional Theater, Ryeth paid that, and $400 for a second straw header concert, which did not happen. We are requesting that the village use this money, the $1,250, to help purchase a security gate lighting and a plaque which will recognize our generous donors. We will prioritize that we need as we receive the necessary funds to purchase. Thank you for your consideration, that was Jerry Fadbro from the Stage Committee.
Do you need a motion in that room?
Um... Yeah.
Should if you're changing money like that, shouldn't you?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to take the $1,250, roll the money into the security gate, the lighting, and the plaque for the new band concert, or the band, um, stage.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, is there any discussion? Okay, no discussion, all those in favor, vote, but use your sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And the next item I have is an announcement, it's, there's a, North Country Ballet Ensemble presents Nutcracker. The performance will include parts of Act One and Act Two. It's going to be held on Sunday, the 15th of November, at 3:00 PM at the Francis Budmore Auditorium at the NCCS High School. There's no fee. The monetary donations are accepted for area food shelf. The Nutcracker used in performance to be given away and a chance to win a pair of tickets to the November 27th, 7:30 PM show at the Hartman Theater at SUNY Plattsburgh. Tickets for the North Country Ballet Ensemble Plattsburgh and late classic performances of the Nutcracker will be available for purchase, and this is being sponsored by the Roses Point Champlain Historical Society. That's just for informational. And that's all I have for correspondence.
Thank you, LaCarle. Okay, report to the mayor and the board trustees, he calls, they're voting tonight.
I can read the resolution if you want.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, the first item is a resolution designating the offices for the next village election. Whereas the next general election for the officers shall be held on March 16, 2010. And whereas the board trustees is adopting a resolution designating the offices to be filled in such election and the terms. Now therefore be it resolved that the board trustees of the Village of Roses Point designate the following offices are vacant at the end of the current official year to be filled at the village election to be on March 16, 2010. That's mayor, two-year term, trustee, two-year term, and a second trustee for two-year term. Be it further resolved that the village clerk is hereby directed to publish the resolution in the fold in the press Republican, this resolution shall take effect immediately. The following question, the board was duly put to a roll call vote, which resulted as follows.
I'll put that in form of a motion, I'll second that. Okay, motion made by myself and seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Read the next one, too, signature in the reading room.
This second resolution is for the adoption of the state of New York Deferred Compensation Plan, whereas the Village of Roses Point wishes to adopt a deferred compensation plan for employees of the state of New York and other participating public jurisdictions for voluntary participation of all eligible employees. And whereas the Village of Roses Point is a local public employer eligible to adopt the plan pursuant to Section 5 of the state finance law. And whereas the Village of Roses Point has reviewed the plan established in accordance with Section 457 of the Internal Revenue Code and Section 5 of the state finance law of the state of New York. And whereas the purpose of the plan is to encourage employees to make and continue careers with the Village of Roses Point by providing eligible employees with a convenient and tax-flavored method of saving on a regular and long-term basis, and thereby provide for their retirement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Roses Point hereby adopts the plan for the voluntary participation of all eligible employees, and it is further resolved that the appropriate officials of the Village of Roses Point are hereby authorized to take such actions and enter such agreements as are required or necessary for the adoption, implementation, and maintenance of the plan. And it is further resolved that the Administrative Service Agency is hereby authorized to file copies of these resolutions and other required documents with the President of the State of New York Civil Service Commission.
I'll make a motion to, to the adoption of the state for the employees of the village for the state and New York Deferred Compensation Plan.
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper, any discussion?
I just want to add that there's not, that has no cost to the village.
Aye. Is this a, got to be a roll call vote?
I do roll call, yes.
Okay, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Well, you're on a roll, you have the next one to read.
No, I'm going to give this one to Arsen.
Oh, good.
Do I have to read the whole thing?
No, just the first part.
Okay, I'll read it. Bond resolution dated November 2nd, 2009, a resolution authorizing the installation of installation in the village civic center in and for the Village of Roses Point, Clinton County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $168,875, and authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $168,875 serial bonds of said village to pay the cost thereof.
That's going to be a five-year issue.
My idea, that's, oh, that's good, that's good. Nice, small.
Is the interest rate set in there, Arsen, yet?
Not yet. We have to pass this resolution, and we have to wait, I don't know, it's 10 or 20 days after the resolution, I have to read the thing again.
That's roll call, mayor.
I'll put that in form of a motion then, to apply for a resolution, the maximum estimated cost of $168,875.
It should, it should be a good rate, though.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, is there any discussion, Board?
Yeah, I'd just like to, just mention a little something on that. First of all, we did quite a bit of work in the inside of the rink this year because the roof, we had trouble with the roof. So they came in and did quite a bit of work inside the rink, you can see it's a lot brighter. Looks like everything has worked out quite well. It's the most important building, I think, in the village, and we got some of it paid for under the IEEP, so we tried to do it as cost-effectively as we could for the taxpayers, and so I'm glad that it's done.
Any other discussion? It's not, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Okay, next item here is a discussion on proposed security systems for the rec center and the public works building.
Okay, Murs, I'd like to make a, a motion to accept the bid from Security Concepts of New York in Keyesville, New York, and the total is, the camera system here at the rec center is $9,985.87, and the bid for the blue building is $9,542.12.
I'll give a second for that for discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay, by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, any discussion?
Yes. Last week, on October 27th, we had NCC Systems from Potsdam, New York, come to the village board meeting, gave us a presentation. We also had Security Concepts of Keyesville, New York, come up and give a presentation. On Friday, trustee Cooper, trustee Baker, and myself went down to Keyesville. We spoke with a very respected businessman in Keyesville, he owns a business in Roses Point, a very successful business in Keyesville. Asked him about his system, asked him about security concepts, if he was happy, he told us he was. We went to the library on the main street in Keyesville, and went inside and checked the camera systems out. They have two cameras in the front of the building, actually three cameras at the front, then we had, they have some cameras at the back of the building. We had an actual hands-on demonstration. We went to the Security Concept Building on 70 Osable Street in Keyesville, met with the owner of the business. We were quite satisfied with the presentation, he answered all our questions, and we're going to move ahead with cameras for the village. It's a fact of life, there's cameras every major building that we go into. We've had some problems here in the past with some of the kids, and we decided to protect the liability of the village and to protect our personal property, that it was in the village's best interest to go ahead with the camera system. And that's the reason that I've made this motion tonight, and that's all I have to report on this. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, motion made and seconded, all those in favor, vote, but use your sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, I think I have one other item, yeah, two others. Update on cell towers. Everybody and their brother wants to know about what's happening with cell service in Roses Point. Well, we have, we have a contract with Verizon to put a tower, or put an antenna on our water tower. That contract has been approved by our attorneys, we're waiting for it to come from Verizon to be signed, but there's one little hitch. That little hitch is, they have to have a clearance from Landmark, the builder of the tower, water tank, I should say, that the work they're going to be doing on the top will not affect the coating on the inside of that tank. Before I allow any welding or anything to be done on that tank, I want that guaranteed. That coating is very, very expensive, and it's very time-consuming, and I think, what was it, pretty close to two months, or pretty, maybe more? Last year, we had to shut that tank down and run strictly on pumps while they coated the inside. We've got a 10-year guarantee on it, and I want it to see the last of 10 years. I don't want it to have to go through that again. So that is a holdup. Soon as Landmark gives our blessings, and the drawings are all approved, the things will move forward.
Would you speak on a couple of towers that we looked at in the way to Syracuse?
They got them on tanks all over, water tanks all over, same type of tanks that we've got. We've seen them on there, I don't know if they're Verizon or who they are. There is antennas on these tanks, so I just, you got to understand where I'm coming from. I want that guarantee, that they're not going to ruin that coating on the inside.
We got it, mate.
Yeah. It's about a million-two sitting in that tank that they're there. So that's where it stands, on the cell towers. It's moving, but I think of the sales base, it's, that's right, yeah. Okay, last thing I have on my agenda is a good thing on Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving night, was that November 26th, Thanksgiving?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, on November 26th, at 11:00 PM, the Canadian Pacific, Canadian Pacific Holiday Train will be there. They're doing the same as they did last year, their Roses Point will be their very first stop. It's going to stop on the way down instead of the last stop on the way back at a later time. It allows us to have it about an hour, hour and a half earlier than late back. It worked out quite well last year.
Oh, my word.
We've been notified by CP that, that is a date, I know it's Thanksgiving, everybody will be full of turkey and everything else, but it's a good way to walk it off, walk up to the station and see it. Enjoy the show, because they do put on a nice show.
Would you like a donation for the food shop?
Yeah, and the only request is, is to bring a can good for the food shop.
George, can I advertise that in the paper?
CP will be sending out half shortly, I hope. I got to call him tomorrow, see where that is. They give, they give a thousand-dollar check every year to the food shop, CP does. It's a, it's a nice shot there for them.
Food shop, Joe.
Yeah. And that's it for me. Trustee Jefferson.
Thank you, Mayor Rivers. Just a couple items on my agenda tonight. The first item is, I'd like to request permission for Gary Malinsky and Mike Riley to attend a seminar in Peru, New York, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
Motion made by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, is there any discussion? For your information, Gary Malinsky and Mike Riley was, is actually going to be doing as part of the program, they're going to be actually doing a presentation on record-keeping. And it's, it's a nice pat on the back to the Roses Point Water Plant, because the Health Department recognized that Roses Point always down air keep excellent records. So it's, that's what they're going to be doing, a presentation on, on record-keeping. No other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The second item on my agenda tonight, I'll make a motion to request an executive session for an electrical, electrical problem in the village.
Electrical customer.
Customer, excuse me.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker, roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And that's all I have on my agenda tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Baker?
Yeah, the only thing I have on my agenda is a little bandstand they put up, needs a door 12 feet high, 20 and 1/2 feet long, we got to do something with that, got to close that thing up, or the kids will have it burnt, sure as hell, so we have to decide what, exactly where to do it.
Just approve the money change on that. See what they can come up with. That it? You don't need a motion, I don't need a motion.
Who authorized the committee to go forward and get some in the door?
Yeah, I'll give, yeah, okay. Try to keep it to 1,200 bucks.
I'll second the motion.
You don't need a motion. The mayor said we don't need it.
Well, if you just, if you just can have me ask this.
We already moved to spend the money. Any other, trustee Baker?
Nope.
That's it for me. Thank you, sir. Trustee Cooper?
The only thing I have on, the John's on vacation is, on personnel, I'd like to make a motion to the mayor, who authorized to implement a agreement where the particular village employees who have drawn pending disciplinary charges on terms and conditions, recommend the attorney for the village.
Second. Moved by trustee Cooper, seconded by trustee Jefferson, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote, but use your sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Carol?
I haven't enough.
What words of wisdom do you have for it?
None.
None? Arsen? What's that, Arsen?